Okay, we'll go ahead and bring tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. If there's anyone present who needs special assistance, please let us know and we'll try to accommodate you. We will begin the proceedings with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember LeFever.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Fouch.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a -- sorry about that. I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second, any other discussion? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fouch.
Aye.
Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
So moved. Now we go to approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
So moved, any further discussion? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fouch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of training with data tech for the city clerk. Vicky, is that the same lady that's -- who is that that's going to be providing that?
[inaudible]
Is there a specific person though?
No.
Okay.
It's an office computer program, so it's training on some of its accounts payable, general ledger, bank reconciliation, utility billing, and payroll modules. The schedule will be two days at City Hall, and the price is good, within 30 days from approval. Cost is $550 per day, which has been consistent, I believe, with the other times that they've worked with us, plus 56 cents mileage from Omaha, approximately 40 miles. So the total estimated cost was $1,189.60. The question I would have is can we request, and hopefully I'm saying this right, but the lady's name is Janan, I think, that has helped us in the past, and would know the -- Am I getting the right company?
She does onsite training, or, you know, help.
Right.
That's her job.
Right.
So can we request her? I don't know, I would think so.
We could at least ask, because she's familiar with our community and our city has worked with us for a long time, so I think there'd be some value there. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. I had one other question. Is the two days, was that determined by a need? How did we come to the two days? Is there one day and we can decide we've got enough, or can we go on a third day or two days? What came to that conclusion?
When it called in that would take two days.
Two days to complete what?
Of every one of the modules.
I got a question. Is this training that Marilyn can do too, or have you had this training?
I haven't.
Okay.
Well, mostly.
Okay.
What they will do is they will familiarize Vicky with the software. It's not clerk training, it is software.
Okay.
That they're -- they will be doing. So have I had training? No. Yes, some, from Angela. And then, once you know how to use their software, you pick things up. Okay?
Is this software specific to us? Is this something that's specific to this training company, just out of curiosity? Is this their software? Does anybody know that?
Correct.
Is this their software?
We don't, we use.
Okay. So they're the only people that could facilitate the training, really? Okay, all right. Mike, do you want to continue with your motion?
I'd make a motion to approve training with data tech for the city clerk. It's really software training or software program training for what I -- the summit accounts payable, general ledger, bank reconciliation, utility billing, and payroll modules. Two days at City Hall, cost $550 per day, plus 56 cents mileage from Omaha, approximately 40 miles. Total estimated cost $1,189.60. And I would ask for Janan, if possible.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fouch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
So moved. Agenda item number seven, the approval of a special Class C beer wine permit for six-pack and ribs. Any discussion on this issue?
Is everything in order, Vicky?
I'd like the application, including the package, that's nice, since now we're not obviously always printing these out, these are nice to have, and see the actual form. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Class C beer and wine permit for Ribrack, Six-Pack and Ribrack LLC.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fouch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number eight, discuss and consider removing old Jim computer from the office. I believe Jim is actually the brand, not a -- discuss the need to upgrade the office computers. Vicky, I assume that you put this on the agenda?
The Jim computer.
I turned that on, sorry. Yeah, it's really loud, so.
The Jim computer that we had in the upper office crashed on us the other day. There was some information on it that we needed to get off of it, so they did put that onto a flash drive. They had to take the computer with them in order to do it, and they called me today and asked if we wanted the computer back or just the flash drive. And if they can dispose of the computer, it would save us the cost of having to do it. And then also, while we were talking to them, they're suggesting that we start discussing the need to upgrade the office computers, because we're not compatible with a lot of the different programs that are out there. And they're about six, seven years old now, and they said that Dell computers run about six years.
So both those computers, the other two, this was the third one, right? The other two were purchased about the same time?
Mm-hmm.
Are we having any problems with them?
So, I mean, we are starting to have a little bit slower and not as compatible with some of the programs that we want to run. Marilyn, especially with the volume that she's had on hers, is starting to see a few more glitches on hers than what I am on mine.
So are you going to get a proposal, total cost and expense of all the computers? You can take a look at what that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, it says discuss and consider, but we really don't have anything to consider, so.
I would be in favor of letting them.
As far as discussing removing that, is there anything on there that we need to, I mean, given our current litigation state, does that have to be saved, or, I mean, maybe we could remove it, but not dispose of it, maybe, I don't know, what would we do with the other one, we backed it up somehow?
This information's on the flash drive.
Okay. So we should be okay there?
We want to verify that.
Yeah, okay.
Verify that and then wipe the drive clean, they go in.
Right.
Okay.
You can save our drive.
Yeah. So how do you guys want to handle that? Do you want to make a motion to do that? I don't know that we need to, but.
If we don't do anything, they return the computer back to us?
If we don't do anything, will the computer be returned back to us?
Yes.
I don't know if there's any harm in that, going that route. Do we have any other questions? Just move on to the next -- yeah, go ahead, okay. Let's go ahead and move on to agenda item number nine. Discuss and consider bids received for removal, trimming of trees on four properties recommended by Mark Warren Insurance. We have received, it looks like, four bids on this for several different properties, from Backyard Tree Experts, Rodmeeker, Russ Haas, I believe, and QD Tree Service. Is that how you pronounce that? Yes. Done individual bids for each tree, and a bid we accept all trees. Am I saying that right? Have you got anything to add to that? I kind of wanted to expand the conversation, because I think this is timely, this has come up, it may be tackled two different issues here. We've got these trees, and I've tried to investigate a little bit by talking with Vicky about how we identified these four trees, and I think it was a joint effort between Scott and his guys, and citizens, and others coming forward with these issues, and then also Mark, kind of assessing what the situation was. We also have received back in January, I think January or February, late January, this tree management plan from the state, and it looks like these trees and 24 others or so were also identified as kind of immediate threats and immediate risks, and that they proposed a plan to, they basically said, estimate, you know, replacement costs at $56,000 for just the trees that would be affected by the, you know, base of ash for, so a lot of our ash trees. But then they also talked about budgeting for these current ones that are dead and dying and at risk of falling on, you know, causing harm in accident. And I think that's more or less what Mark Warren was coming after with his assessment here, was to say, hey, we know about these now, they've identified, they're falling down, they're a risk, we need to do something, we can't just sit on our hands with these and kind of just let them stay through another winter or whatever. And I agree wholeheartedly with them. We didn't really do anything when the budget came around to put some money in here, and we talked just real briefly about doing it at that time, about, you know, how we should tackle this. And I hadn't looked and talked to anybody at the state about, you know, what other cities are doing or how to tackle this, and I hadn't really even considered the ash tree issue, because they expect them, within five to 10 years, that most of those will be affected and probably need to come down. So as that pass continues to invade cities in Iowa, I was more or less looking at all the ones I knew in town that were looked at from just visual inspection, that looked like they were dead or dying or in need of coming down. So I would like to look at this even further and put it on a future agenda, to possibly look at the next round of them, depending on what we have at the budget and what we can do. I don't know if this is a comprehensive list, I think we need to ask that question, we kind of need to look at what's the next, what are the next trees that are going to present us with a problem. I would hope that we get the worst ones with this, but I don't know if we've done that. Based on this study, there seems to be others that we have included, and that's my concern. So maybe, I don't know if Scott and his guys have looked at this report and this list and all the red dots that are on it, if Mark's looked at that list with all the red dots on it and gone through those, or if he's just went off, you know, the word of mouth with these current trees that were kind of the top of folks' minds as in need of removal. Anybody else think? I think you're right, I just think we definitely need to, that's something that can sneak up on you, and all of a sudden you've got a major expense, whereas if we can get ahead of it, maybe we can do a little bit of a time and try and save the budget a little bit, treat it more as a proactive maintenance type issue rather than a responsive issue. We do have these specific trees that have been noted, and once they are noted, I believe, insurance-wise, that then becomes, if you're not aware of them and you don't know, it's, your insurance will cover it, but I think, my understanding is, once they've been identified, you're taking on some liability and some risk there, so. I totally agree, and I think we've got 30 trees that have been identified that are standing with these trees. And that was my point kind of at the time, is that we need to start tackling that and looking at them instead of a piecemeal, kind of, hey, this one's creaking, or the limb's falling in the street, the rest of it should just come down at the same time. And I agree with your assessment that we, you know, we'll get more bang for our buck if we, you know, if we bid this out on a larger scale. I think some of these people, according to Vicky, were offering a discount, the more trees they got, the greater the project. Can we swallow that? Can we take that with the budget? We may not be able to, we may just have to take it in piecemeal. Right. But I'd like to look at that and consider that. Again, I don't want to wait too long, but now's the time. So you're recommending table this until the next meeting? Well, I'm opening it up, I want to hear from others too, on what you guys think. You know, we should start with these? I mean, I think we have some good offers, could we get better? I don't know.
Have we got money in the budget to do more?
That's a big question. That's a big one. That's a big question that we need to look at.
Have we got enough money to pay for these?
Good question. Do we have enough money not to pay for these? Right, right.
It sounds like these are the worst ones, according to the insurance. I think we should just start with these first and do a few more next year, when we've got more money.
I agree with you, Dizzy. I think it's a good idea to get these out of the way. I drove around town and looked at them as well, and some of them are really bad, either completely dead or, except 90 percent dead. So I guess if we have the money to do it, I'd say do these and then start working on a plan to do the rest of them. Well, I'm trying to figure that out myself. They've bid each one individually, but then there's some that are giving discounts if we do the whole project, so it's a little bit confusing. Okay, if we do all four trees, Backyard Tree Experts, $4160, Rodmeeker, $4300, Russ Haas, $4300, and the QD Tree Service, $8500. So.
And then is the 20 percent discount already incorporated into $4160?
Yes, that's if we do all four trees.
I think there's one more difference, Jim. It looks like the Backyard Tree Experts.
Yes.
Was going to trim the branches at 315 East Ninth.
Okay, I see that.
And Rodmeeker did not provide a bid for trimming, his recommendation was to completely remove the tree.
Okay. So his $4300 includes complete removal of that tree?
Right. And the other three include, how I read this, trimming the branches.
Okay.
Backyards was, back removal too. Tree move tree, it's cheaper because it's 20 percent discount.
Oh, I see them back over here now. To trim branches. So it's $2,400, his bid was to trim, and it's $4160 to remove.
Right. Yeah.
So your numbers were right?
Either of the ones were right.
That's right.
Yeah. Any restrictions on when the, these folks could do the work that they may be aware of, like, we're four months out, or we can do it next week, or nothing? Okay. I'm going to go out on a limb here, I'm assuming Rodmeeker has done work for the city before, and we are aware that he's licensed, insured, bonded, all that stuff. Has any of the other companies done work for us, anybody aware of that? Do we know what their status is with insurance and all that stuff? They did provide. So, and Rod and Russ are the same one, right?
Rod's a local guy, though, so, just going to give him the bid. I make the motion to hire Rodmeeker to do the work cutting four trees for the $4300.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
I would second that.
Any further discussion? I see the second note on the back, says that the homeowner on this residence, Amber Gomez, has been notified by certified mail that she is responsible for one-half the expense of removing the trees. Does that, does it say that anywhere in that code book or IO code, or is that something we just do? Okay, ordinance 151.03, duty to trim trees, the owner or agent of the abutting property shall keep the trees on or overhanging the street trimmed, so the branches will be at least 15 feet above. If the abutting property owner fails to trim the trees, the city may serve notice to the abutting property owner requiring such action be taken within five days. If such action is not taken within that time, the city may perform the required action to assess the cost against the abutting property for collection, same manner with the property tax, that deals with trimming, not removal, I would say. Is there another?
Yeah, 150.
Is there a point through, what was that, point two, or point one? There's planning restrictions, duty to trim some trees, inspection and removal. 151.06, inspection and removal? Yeah. City property, if it is determined that such condition exists on any public property, including the strip between the curb and the lot line of private property, the council may cause such condition to be corrected by treatment or removal. The council may also order the removal of any trees on the streets of the city which interfere with the making of improvements or the travel there. So I'm assuming we're talking about the streets on the city property, right? And is that the tree that was recommended that some were going to trim and some were going to, no, this is a separate tree? That's the one straight across the street from the jail? Okay. That would be the... Okay, and that was Mark's no, correct? That she's been notified? No. Then sure, no. Okay. And why, why didn't we notify her? That's what Mark recommended? Okay. Why did we notify only that one, or the other ones? Oh, the other, okay, so she's not the only one that's been notified? Okay. Yeah, the way I interpret it, 151.06, inspection and removal, if you've got two conditions, you've got private property and you have city property, and the private property, the city can ask the homeowner that has a dangerous tree or an ash tree, as stated in this report, or something like that, that we want removed, this disease, or whatever, we can then, you know, ask, you know, obligate the citizens to remove those trees. But the city property looks to clearly be the city's obligation to remove at city's expense. I don't see any sharing or any joint sharing of those costs. I guess any citizen certainly can volunteer to help the city with those expenses, but I don't think there's any obligation that we have to charge it. That, and it says that repeatedly through the report, is before you cut any tree, that you verify that it is the city's. These look pretty clear. I looked on the GIS website, and I realized that's not a legally binding document, but almost every one of these trees is on the street side of the sidewalk, so that would lead me to believe that they're public. Not in every situation, if you're correct, but in most cases, that would be correct. Take a look at it? Can you look at it? Okay, well, I have, you want to, I have a motion, a second, do we have to vote that, or you want to, do we withdraw? How does that?
I'll withdraw. I'll withdraw.
Okay, okay. Motion withdrawn. We want to table this item number for further investigation on the trees and where they Would that be, would that be Scott? How do we proceed with verifying this? To be determined?
Review of this packet will help us kind of determine that. It says to verify that. I think if both parties consent that they agree where the tree is, if we have a dispute, we clearly then need to settle that.
Okay.
But if we agree it's on our property, their property, and, you know, and we all agree on that, we probably can move forward. Yeah, last thing we want to do is go and remove a tree, and someone say, "That was my tree." You know, and vice versa. We don't want citizens cutting down trees that are on the city right of way that aren't theirs to cut down.
Okay. All right, we're gonna table that item for further investigation, and we'll move on to item number ten, discuss and consider ammunition purchase for the police department. I know we kind of have two different things to look at here. One is, Justin is preparing to attend the academy, and he will require ammunition for that. And the other is for stockpile for the department, for training and a few duty rounds as well.
Everybody's got these copies?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you can see on there, myself and Vicki had talked about where it'd come out, as far as within the budget, and then the other sheet show pretty much the exact amount from each caliber, where we're comparable to the Woodbine Police Department, which is similar to our size, they got three officers, or two officers and a chief, and where we'd be at once we made the recommended purchase. And Officer Miller will need his academy needs sooner than later here. He leaves September ninth for the academy up in Sioux City.
And that's the five twenty-eight?
Yeah, that's his amount.
Okay.
I put it all through Cabela's just because it's a nationwide chain, and they can get a large amount. I'd rather go through some of the smaller places, but they just can't give us as much as we'd like. And that number at the bottom for the department needs, that can fluctuate a little bit back and forth, but that's a relatively close number to what it would be over all calibers with whatever we'd get.
Is there a reason that, other than budget, maybe why we don't just go with what, I mean, get ours the same as theirs, or why do they have twice as much as we do after the recommendations?
I looked at the budget, and I would love to match the numbers that Woodbine has. I just did not know how much we could match, so that's why I gave a relatively low number just to get us out from being very low on some of the different calibers. But, yeah, I would like to match Woodbine's if possible.
So right now, we have, just in case anybody else doesn't have this, buckshot, we have fifty, slugs, we have zero, forty target rounds, we have five hundred rounds, forty duty rounds, we have zero, two-twenty-three ammo, we have two-hundred-and-eighty rounds.
That's correct.
And you're proposing buckshot, one-fifty, slugs, fifty, forty target, two thousand, forty duty round, five hundred, two-two-three, five-eighty.
That's, that's what I'd like to get it up to, and that's still, we're about fifty percent below what Woodbine would be, but for, as far as training and just for the duty rounds that our officers need for just daily use, that's where I'd like to be at.
If you had to prioritize the list any further, where would you end up? I mean, it looks like the duty rounds with zero, a slug as well, would we have zero where?
Yeah, as far as, you know, previously with Chief Smith, we just, he just seemed, he hadn't kept up with depleted rounds once we'd used them through training and purchasing new ones. That might have been also because of the ammunition shortage you've had here recently with the incidents that have happened. It's been a struggle to get, get some of the calibers, but they've had been coming back, so through Cabela's, which I've, did all the pricing, almost all that stuff is in stock.
In your recommendation, then, you looked at the budget, and you felt that's what the budget could, could hold?
There's two, there's two different categories, small equipment and miscellaneous expense. There isn't a specific one for ammunition or, you know, weapon accessories or anything like that, so I didn't know which one it would be drawn from. That would, that would fluctuate the amount we could do either way.
You said there's some smaller venues that you would have preferred to purchase from?
Yeah, as far as, you know, double barrel, shooting supply, stuff like that, but they couldn't, they wouldn't be able to match the numbers we have. If we did, we had talked about a monthly to catch up, we could do that.
Okay.
Instead of one large purpose.
Treatment, maintenance, ongoing maintenance replenishing, rather than a one-well purchase?
The department, one, could do that, again, with Officer Miller, he'd have to purchase immediately, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that kind of an approach. Like I said, I think there's places to start right away, and we could trickle in the others over near future, and monthly. What would you pick to start? What could they do to start? Did they give you an idea on the duty rounds, or?
As far as?
The slug and the duty rounds that we're negative on?
Well, the amount I've given you there is probably, again, that gets us only to about fifty percent of what Woodbine has, which, you know, of course, duty rounds is what we would need first and foremost, and then target rounds, as far as forty for training, but the other ones can be a little slower than need be.
Let me rephrase my question. Can one of the other stores that you mentioned, can they, what can they provide in part, as far as duty rounds and slug?
Double Barrel and some of the other local places is kind of hit or miss, because one day, you know, someone can come in and purchase five hundred rounds plus, so it's kind of hit or miss on that. And then as far as purchasing them, I wasn't sure how would we go about with that, as far as you guys are talking.
We've been talking about getting a city credit card, which would open up some options for Kyle as far as purchasing, am I correct on that? We've been talking about doing a city credit card, which would probably open up options for Kyle as far as where he can purchase, although I would think maybe some of the local ones, we could set up an account possibly or something, if we were doing some, and could they, could they, if you let them know you wanted this ammo, could they start bringing it in for you?
Yeah, I spoke with Double Barrel, and they would be willing to do that with us, and then I know if there are shortages in the future, they said they would make sure that they had rounds available for law enforcement over some of the civilian purchasers they have. And I'm just going with Double Barrel, just because that's the main local one I know here. There are a couple others.
But due to time constraints, you said go ahead and get this five hundred twenty-eight for Miller's academy, we need to get that.
Yeah, we need to get Officer Miller his ammunition as soon as possible, especially with knowing, not knowing where we're purchasing it from. The department stuff can be more of the trickle effect through the monthly purchases, and I can continue to look for better pricing than, than when I got through Cabela's. I'm sure there's other local places I could look at that could get us a little bit of better deal. As far as Officer Miller, he probably would have to go to Bass Pro Shops or Cabela's, or a large place that would have the quantity he needs.
Chip away at this, I'll make the motion that we approve the five hundred twenty-eight dollars for Officer Miller's academy needs, so we can get that off the table.
I second that.
Okay, there, there is, Vicki has pointed out to me that there is nineteen ninety-five shipping on there as well, very small print.
With Officer Miller's purchase, it's probably not going to be able to be an online one. He's probably gonna have to go directly to the store, and like I said, that's, I tried to go with the most basic, same company, same pricing on everything, but it could fluctuate, so that exact number of, I can't remember what it was, five something, it may change.
Okay, so, then I'll base my motion off, I'll make a motion that we approve Officer Miller's academy needs based on the quantities and calibers denoted in this form here, exhibit one, that's also priced out at five twenty-eight, but if that price fluctuates.
Slightly, you won't be too large, you do it.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to purchase the quantities needed for Officer Miller to attend the academy. Any further discussion?
Still, is there a duty round then?
Well, I think we're gonna continue to address that. We want to get Justin's out of the way, continue on the same topic. Am I correct in what, that's the way I understood your motion? Any further discussion? Councilmember LeFevere?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion to purchase the needs of the academy carries, and now we have further discussion on the rounds for stockpile of ammunition.
So I think, Nick, your point was, yeah, we still have the deficit in the duty rounds and the slugs, and, well, everything for that matter, but those two were at zero at. I like the idea about going to a local supplier, somebody that can keep us constantly replenished. Can you go through that?
Okay, how, do you want to, do we need a motion or something, or do we want to try and investigate, have Officer Graver investigate with Double Barrel to see what we can set up there? Do you have a target number that you want to try and get on your, on the first?
I, I say we go and use the recommended purchases that Kyle wrote up for at least those two initially, whatever, well, whatever we can get on this list from Double Barrel, I'll make the motion that we try and acquire that, being that it's an unknown quantity at this time, and therefore an unknown price.
Okay, so, if I understand your motion, you're gonna make a motion that we authorize Officer Graver to negotiate with Double Barrel for the purchase of up to a hundred and fifty rounds of buckshot, fifty rounds of slug, two thousand rounds of forty target, five hundred forty, forty caliber duty rounds, and up to five hundred and eighty two-two-three rounds, is that? Do I do the whole thing at once?
Yeah, yes, I, sounds good.
Okay, do I have a second on that? I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Councilmember LeFevere?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we move on to the agenda item number eleven, discussing and consideration of our chicken ordinance. That has, I think we got a final draft of that today, first of all. Nick kind of took the lead on this, so I want to thank him for getting the ball rolling here. This has been rather contentious issue, and it's been some give and take, and trying to come up with something that we think would be, would solve our number one goals with the chickens, which is obvious to everybody, and it would be also palatable to the rest of the community. And I think we've come up with something here, I'm not, I guess, Mike, I'm not really sure of the process here. Do we read this? Do we motion and then do a reading? Do we have discussion? I guess, I guess this is, sorry, forgive me for my...
I think it'd be... Third time here. I think it'd be appropriate to read it.
Okay. So I get to read it?
Yes. You're in the seat.
Can I summarize? I did bring my glasses, but I refuse to put them on, so bear with me, I'm not gonna wear my glasses. Okay, this is urban chicken exception, okay? This would go under Logan City Code, be fifty-five to twenty-one A. As an exception to the Logan Code of Ordinance, sections fifty-five dot zero-one-five and fifty-five dot zero-five, urban chickens, as referenced herein, shall not be considered poultry or livestock. Urban chickens shall be authorized for non-commercial use only on a single residential parcel of land containing an occupied, single-family dwelling and used as such. If said residential parcel of land is one acre or more, the maximum number of urban chickens shall be eight on a single residential parcel of land, one acre but less than two acres. For a single residential parcel of land, two acres or more, an additional two urban chickens per acre shall be allowed on said residential parcel of land. No urban chickens shall be allowed for residential parcel of land less than one acre in size. Only female urban chicken hens shall be allowed pursuant, this is, I'm sorry, it was going to be, only one urban chicken, only female urban chicken hens shall be allowed in pursuit to this ordinance. All urban chickens shall be, at times, kept in a fenced area or an enclosure that is not a dwelling. Additionally, the urban chickens shall be secured within a hen house during non-daylight hours, and the said hen house be located inside the enclosure or fenced area during. Said enclosure or fenced area shall be located in the backyard of the residential parcel of land. Additionally, said enclosure or fenced area shall be at least three feet from the property line, at least twenty-five feet from the adjacent residential dwelling, church, school, or place of business. All manure, C, all manure stored on the residential parcel of land shall be maintained within a fully enclosed structure with a roof or lid. No more than three cubic feet of manure may be stored on the residential parcel of land. All manure in excess of three cubic feet, not currently applied as compost or fertilizer, shall be removed from the residential parcel of land. The hen house, enclosure, or fenced area, and surrounding areas shall be kept free from trash and accumulated urban chicken droppings. Odors from urban chickens, urban chicken manure, or other chicken-related substances shall not be perceptible beyond the boundaries of the residential parcel of land. The keeping of urban chickens shall not cause a safety or health hazard to the general public to interfere with, with the quiet enjoyment of the adjacent property owner. In addition, the area beyond the boundary of the residential parcel of land shall be free from noise from the urban chickens, so as to not disturb persons of reasonable sensitivity. Urban chickens shall be provided with access to feed and clean water at all times. All urban chicken feed shall be stored in a rodent-proof container. Uneaten urban chicken feed shall be removed in a timely manner. Necessary actions will be taken to reduce the attractions of predators and rodents, and potential infestations of insects and parasites. Number two, prior to the ordinance, shall be obtained from City Hall in order to provide an applicant with a copy of the above regulations. Assess compliance with said regulations and arrange that... Assess compliance with said regulations and arrange and authorize the initial city inspection to ensure compliance. There shall be a $25 permit fee. Any violation of this ordinance by owner, as defined in Logan Code of Ordinances 55.016 and/or property owner, as defined in Logan Code of Ordinance 1.0216, shall be subject to criminal penalties pursuant to Logan Code of Ordinance 1.10. The city may revoke the permit of violators of this ordinance. The city may pursue municipal infractions and/or alternative relief where appropriate pursuant to Chapter 3 of Logan Code of Ordinances. B, citations summons issued pursuant to consistent with ordinances 55.14, and this must be, is that one? B1, the owner of the property, the owner or property owner of any unauthorized urban chickens shall be issued a summons to appear before magistrate court to answer charges of violations of any and all sections of ordinances. And two, the magistrate court may order the permit of the urban chickens revoked and some or all of the urban chickens removed from the city. Three, should the defendant refuse to remove said chickens from the city, the magistrate court may find the defendant in contempt of court in order to the immediate confiscation and impoundment of some or all of the urban chickens. Each day that a violation of this chapter continues shall be deemed a separate offense. And in addition to any other municipal infractions, civil or criminal penalties imposed, or any person who violates this chapter shall pay all expenses, including shelter, food, handling, veterinary care, city costs, city fees, and testimony necessitated by the enforcement of this chapter. C, an exception to this ordinance may only be granted by express written consent of the majority of the council. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as whole or any section, provisions, or part thereof, not adjacent, invalid, or unconstitutional. And number five, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law.
I'll make a motion to approve the urban chicken exception 55.20 to Logan Code of Ordinance, Section 55.015 and 55.05.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And this, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first reading, correct? We have to do three readings for this.
Right, make a motion for the first reading.
Okay.
To approve an urban chicken exception 55.20 to Logan Code of Ordinance, Section 55.015 and 55.05.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion?
Jim, I appreciate your thanking me for taking the ball on this. But I will say, I worked quite a bit on this ordinance. I read a lot of different ordinances. I presented, or I had a meeting with Mike, presented him with some stuff for the ordinance. And nothing that I presented, well, maybe a little bit, but some of the stuff that I presented isn't in here. And I have not heard anything about this new ordinance until Saturday morning. So I thought we were working on this. I was told that we were going to meet, put this together, you know, circulate it. Have you seen this yet? Except for today when you got the email? Danny, did you see it before today? So I guess it wasn't really circulated prior to the meeting. At the last meeting, we brought up chickens. Mike, you said that you appreciated it if I would have showed you that prior to the meeting. I don't know if that same day was prior to the meeting that you were talking about or not. I think for some reason, this has been put in high gear right now, like in the last five or six days. I don't know why. I think I have a good idea why, but I guess, there's, I think this needs to be looked at more and maybe discussed more by the people that haven't seen it, instead of just writing something up and shove it down people's throats. Also, I don't understand, who did we write this ordinance for?
Nick, what, I mean, you're kind of dancing around the issue. What are your problems with this ordinance?
Maximum number of chickens shall be eight on a single residence parcel of land, one acre, but less than two acres. So anybody that has less than an acre of land in town cannot have chickens.
That's correct.
Which would be Johnsons, Heebs, and probably a handful of other people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
He's saying that they would be allowed to have chickens.
So we wrote it, we wrote an ordinance for two people that would sort of just give a written consent to have chickens.
Well, actually, there's quite a bit more than two people that have chickens.
How many are there?
Well, yeah, I know the house you have for sale. I believe Gary Boogie, I mean, there's probably 10 or 12 properties. There's 25 properties that has, anybody on Skyline?
Yeah.
There's actually quite a bit that has.
So we wrote this ordinance for 25 people?
Well, you wanted to give an exception to one.
Which is already in the code. How much did we spend on this draft that nobody's seen? $600?
We went through, you know, I'm going to try and hold my tongue here. This issue has been ongoing for quite a while. Let me ask you this, Nick. What was your goal with the chickens? What has been your intent all along with the chickens?
To get some of their chickens back, which is what I wrote, I tried to get written consent on a number of times.
Will this ordinance do that?
Once.
Yeah, it'll do it. So your goal has been met. I think that's a pretty good compromise.
So why can't, I guess I don't understand why we're restricting other people.
Because we live in a community where a large portion of the population does not desire to have chickens. That's, and they don't desire their neighbors to have chickens. So what we've thought is the people who have the room to have chickens without interfering with their neighbor would be a good place to start. Now, does this ordinance have to stay this way forever? Maybe this works out where people say, hey, you know what? Maybe this is a good thing and we go from there. But right now, what is your goal?
I already told you. Okay. And I don't, I don't agree with this ordinance, and I've already stated that.
Well, the ordinance you presented had people that did not agree with it either. I'm trying to bring the two together.
Yeah.
And come up with a reasonable solution. And we were working on it, and then nothing's, we did not come up with this. Okay. But this, we have a motion in a second.
All right.
Any further discussion? Councilmember LeFevere?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Motion fails. So, that being said, I have a responsibility as mayor to enforce the existing ordinance on the law, which I absolutely hate to do. I thought we were going to come to a resolution of this tonight. But I'm not sure how to handle that. I'd like to give a little bit of time for people to remove their chickens, but I guess I'm going to let it be known that come next Monday, we are going to have to enforce the current ordinance since we have failed to change the ordinance. So we will begin issuing citations for anybody that we are aware has chickens. And I believe our current ordinance is written the same as this one. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that each day that chickens are on the property is a separate violation. Is that correct? So guys, as of next Monday, I'm instructing you to write citations every day that there are chickens on the properties that we are aware of. Okay? Sorry, Skip. I tried. To the, yeah, to the property owner, to the keeper of the chickens would be the property owner. So I thought we had this resolved tonight. I really did. Okay, well, that motion disappointingly fails. We move on to the clerk's report.
The only thing that I have to report really is that the city of Logan has received a check from Miles Barnhart Estate, and in the will, there was some stipulations on it as far as how the money is to be spent, is for the improvement of the community building and the senior center. We've come up, we've kicked around some ideas that we will be presenting to the city council and to the mayor, but we're also asking for individuals, if you have some ideas, using the community center, what you would like to see it used as, and how you might want the money spent.
How much are we talking about? Ryan, you mentioned it in the past. Do you have that with you? Rough idea? Can you give us a rough idea?
Roughly, the check was for $68,000. And I'm sorry, I should mention that that is the first part of the estate. We also got notification that there will be some other monies forthcoming after the sale of the properties.
We've been talking about quite a few renovations and repairs and upgrades to the counters in the kitchen and other little amenities here in the community center. I think the list is, probably wouldn't even scratch this number. I'd like to get some of that on the agenda and get some of that stuff started. We've had a wish list for a long time. I know Marilyn, you've been, you know, putting one together as far as I can remember. I don't know about the rest of you, but I think, you know, we should get estimates and bids and whatever we can on that stuff so we can pull the trigger on it as soon as possible.
We'll move on to agenda item number 13, mayor comments. I guess first of all, I want to thank the community of Logan for their involvement in their local government. It's not often that you see people show up the way you guys do and are persistent. And just, I just encourage you to stay involved in your, in your local political process. It's up to you to hold us as elected officials accountable, and I do mean us as an entirety. And it's also up to you to give us a sense of where this community should be headed and where you want this leadership to take it. So that's just my feelings. I just wanted to get that out there. That being said, I've taken a couple of steps that are kind of a little bit outside the box in the past. We've formed committees from the council to vet potential employees. And with our desire to find the best people possible, and with having had some issues with two people, council members and all that kind of stuff, looking for the best employees, I've decided to take some of that responsibility away from the council. And I think as, as a community, we have, we have a lot of people sitting out here every night that have knowledge and expertise in certain areas. And I, I think we're, we fail as leaders if we don't tap into that knowledge and experience. And so tonight, I'd like to do that. I'm going to announce that I'm forming two committees. The first of which is going to be the Maintenance Assistant Search Committee. We have a vacancy, and I think that it would make sense for, I'm naming Scott Muxfeld, Vicki Schroeder, Boone Cristo, Marilyn Kaiser, and myself to that committee. We're going to go through applicants, weed them out, and we will report back to the council. Just to make it clear, that committee will still fall under open meetings laws. There will be posted agendas and minutes and the whole ball whacks. So you will be hearing more on, more on that as we move forward and try and fill these positions. Now, on the second, I've gone way outside the box. I'm forming a police chief search committee. I think this is one of the most important roles in our community. And I don't see where it makes sense for us as council members with absolutely no law enforcement experience to try and hire that position on our own. While the final determination will obviously be my appointment and the council's approval, I have asked former deputy and current DOT motor vehicle enforcement sergeant Kevin Kilpak, Iowa State Trooper Teague Melby, retired DOT officer Terry Francis, and Omaha Police Sergeant in charge of K-9 unit Steve Worley to serve on a police search committee. Again, that will, that will be an opens meeting law, I mean, we will be compliant, and the ultimate decisions will come back through this council, but, but they will go through the vetting process and try and find us the best candidates. Also, we are in the process of a building inspector. I would hope doing the same there will come to fruition soon, but I would encourage anybody who's interested in that building inspector apps to get those in. We need to, we need to fill these positions quickly and get the city on a positive path here. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? I think if that's the case, we move on to agenda item number 14, citizens' questions and comments.
Terry Francis, 509 North Second Avenue. I just had a question about agenda item nine, a discussion of the trees on four properties. And I'm glad that you did some researching on your, on your ordinances because the way I've read those over the years and being on the council was the fact that if the tree is on your, in your property line, you're responsible for the tree. If the tree is between the sidewalk and the curbing, the tree is still your responsibility even though it's, the property belongs to the city, it's the parkway. So you're still responsible for trimming, keeping it in well cared for, and if it does die and needs to be taken down, it's the, it's the property owner's responsibility. So that's the way I was reading that. So I was glad that we made no decision on that and spent a lot of money on cutting down somebody else's tree on somebody else's property. So I just wanted to bring that forward at this time.
If there's no further comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Skip seconded it. Councilmember LeFevere?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
We are adjourned.